The meeting is now called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dallahan?
Present.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and the place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First up on our work session agenda, we're going to, under A and F, we're going to have a presentation by the New Jersey DEP Division of Coastal Engineering, Chris Constantino, and I'm going to talk about the dune project and Eric Rourke that some of you have probably been reading. There was a couple of press releases, so you've probably been reading some things, hearing some things, so this is an opportunity for us to get some information out there and for any questions that council may have. So, go ahead.
That's what this is. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Chris Constantino from the Division of Coastal Engineering. I am the states' project manager for the beach replenishment project that we have here in Avalon and Stone Harbor, commonly known as the Townsend's Inlet, Cape May Inlet Project. Our office is the non-federal sponsor to the Corps of Engineers on the shore protection projects throughout the state of New Jersey. Eric Rourke is the project manager from the Corps of Engineers, and Vanessa Dornish works with me at the Division of Coastal Engineering, and she's going to be partnering with me as project manager on this upcoming project. So, just wanted to thank everyone for having us here to give a little discussion and have a little discussion about the proposal and answer any questions that the governing body may have of us of the proposal. Just a quick background, we've been doing this project since 2004, I believe was initial construction, and we've had some periodic replenishment projects since initial construction. It's a beach and dune project for 50 years that is prescribed to have periodic renourishment every three years. As you know, there's been some periods where there wasn't enough funding to do the project, so we had periodic nourishment cycles that were missed, and we ended up having to do the project a few years after when we were supposed to do them. And then there's been a few times where we've gotten money in short order, right before Hurricane Sandy, right after Hurricane Sandy, again in 2017, and then this time we got some money pretty quickly after the last renourishment cycle. As you all know, we've been dealing with some issues with the Borough area and Hereford Inlet. We've gotten some funding, but it wasn't an exorbitant amount, excuse me, exorbitant amount of funding to be able to do a full-fledged project even if we had funding from, or the ability to harvest sand from Hereford Inlet. So, what we were trying to do with this project, with the funding we had available, was to try to come up with some engineering project to address some problems and some situations that had been presented to us, not only in the past couple of years, but historically in Stone Harbor. Some of you may know that back in 2008 or 2009, there was a period where, I believe we missed periodic nourishment, there wasn't enough funding, and there was a concern because the beaches in Stone Harbor, especially north of 96th Street, were fairly narrow at the time. And there was discussions between the Borough and our office to talk with the Corps about what we could do to make sure that there was enough beach blanket space and enough beach in front of these dunes. Further investigations identified that actually the dunes in Stone Harbor were doing, had grown so much that they were essentially covering the Army Corps of Engineers beaches. So, we have the engineered dune, which is at elevation 14.75 above sea level or NAVD-88, and then we almost had a full dune at that time in front of our dune, so it was taking up a lot of beach space. As a result of this, you know, these discussions with the Borough and other municipalities up in Monmouth County, the Corps of Engineers and our office actually went to the state's Division of Land Use Regulation to try to come up with avenues to address these problems where sand is either inundating infrastructure like boardwalks or going and blowing on streets, filling in crossovers, people's property, and in this case where it's grown so much that it was taking up beach blanket space and providing some other issues for Public Works with management and maintenance of the beaches and dunes. And as a result of those meetings and some rule changes, we were able to get the state to adopt new rules that allowed for maintenance of engineered beaches and dunes. So essentially, what it was allowing was for the municipality or whoever was a property owner to go through a process with land use to take sand that was over and above the design template and utilize it in other areas in the project where there was a deficiency or just to supplement the project in another way. Some municipalities and some property owners have utilized that on smaller scales, that avenue. Being that we didn't have enough money to do a replenishment here, we felt maybe we would try a pilot project based upon coordination with Public Works and with other people from the Borough to, let's try to address some problems that we have in the absence of a full project. So, what we did was we moved forward with working with Jill and with Public Works and with Corps to identify areas where we had excess sand above the design criteria and try to come up with a way within budget to be able to reuse that sand in a beneficial way. So, I don't know if you want to, you know, add to it or you want to just go right to the presentation. So, what we did was Eric put together a presentation about the scope of the project and some of the stuff tied to it, so we'll go through that right now, and I think you all have it in a paper copy as well.
Great. Thank you. Again, my name's Eric Rourke, I'm with the Army Corps of Engineers out of the Philadelphia office. I'm going to run through a few slides that are going to explain and try to describe as best I can the sand harvesting that we're looking to do in your community. The first, a couple of things you guys probably know your beachers better than we do, but I want to just point out when we talk about shore protection and we look at a dune and a berm, we're talking about the whole system that goes out, all the way out to the sandbar offshore. So, when we're looking at it, we're looking at the sand that's in that whole entire system, and they all work together, the three items. These waves come in, they're going to crash first on your sandbar and take away a lot of the energy before it gets to your berm. The dune is where you're getting your primary protection from, but the berm's purpose is to protect the dune. So, when we're looking at the sand, whether it's in the dune, the berm, or the sandbar, it's all part of the shore protection project. How do I go back? I hit it one too many times, apologize. As Chris alluded to, we had worked at trying to find where some of the sand needs were within the community, and we identified two separate borough, what we call borough areas for the sand harvesting. The northern borough area goes from 85th Street down to 107th Street. The southern borough area is from 115th Street to 121st Street. These areas were identified as where the largest volume of sand was accumulated in the dune that was above the federal design template. In that northern area, we, there's two options we have on our contract. One is for 50,000 cubic yards and the other is for 100,000 cubic yards, and then in the southern area, we just have an option for 50,000 cubic yards. Now it's going forward. Here's the down arrow piece.
Yeah, I can't see it from here, sorry.
Okay, so I use the term federal design template. When we first started looking at this project through the feasibility study and engineering and design, we designed the project based on a certain berm elevation and a certain dune elevation. In Stone Harbor, the dune elevation is at 14.75, and the berm elevation is at 7.25. The actual width of that berm varies on several factors, one including how much sand we have in the system. Typically, when we build, when we nourish the beaches, the dune is constructed to that elevation 14.75, and then the berm varies as we construct and we pump sand onto the beach. So, that's the federal design template. We go to the next slide, you'll see actually our profile that was done last October at 94th Street. In front of that federal design template, you see a cross-hatched area, that's the four dune borough area. So, that's all the sand that's accumulated over the years that is above and beyond what our project was originally designed for. The cross-hatched area is also sitting on top of the berm. So, if you go out there, it actually looks like you just have a sloped beach and there's not much beach there. It's because it's all underneath the dune, that four dune area. So, when we talk about sand harvesting, that's the sand that we're talking about, is sand that's within that cross-hatched area. In some profiles across your whole beach, it could be as much as 10 feet above what that federal template is. So, if you're out there, a lot of views can get obstructed, you can see that they've grown so much higher than what was originally built back in 2004. The next slide. I apologize, I hate texts that have, slides that have a bunch of text, but I figured you were all going to be considering this after we left, so I wanted to capture with words on here for you to look at later what it is that we're actually doing, you can refer back to it. So, the sand that we're harvesting is seaward of the crest of the dune. So, we're not going to the landward side, we're not going behind where the federal dune is, that will stay, we're not touching that area at all. There's actually a two-foot buffer that we've put in there as a, I don't want to call it a safety factor, but it's, we've included, instead of going right down to the federal design template, we're leaving two additional feet of sand on top of that as a buffer onto the dune. The material that gets put onto the berm has to be free of any type of debris. Contractor has to go in, remove sand fence, remove vegetation, remove roots. They're actually, their plan is to bring in a sifter, so they'll actually excavate the sand, put it in a sifter, and take out any type of debris that might be buried over the years in that dune. Once we start excavating an area, the contract's required to go down to that berm elevation and all the way back into the toe of the federal dune. What happens is when we estimate quantities, the contractor's now bound to certain quantities. So, I said we have either 50 or 100 in that northern, those surveys were a year ago, there could be plus or minus additional sand that's actually in there. So, the contractor's going to go in, they're going to track how much sand they're moving. Once they hit that 50,000 or 100,000, whatever option we decided, they're done, they've met their obligation. What we don't want a contractor to do is go in there and just skim off the top layer and say, "Well, I reached my 50,000, so I'm done." That doesn't really, you know, serve its purpose. So, once they start excavating in an area, they have to go all the way down and back so that you're exposing that berm that's underneath the dune, so you're not having, you know, a stepped dune or something else. The dunes will be left, there's a five-to-one slope on our dunes, so when they go in to excavate back, you're not left a sheer cliff, scarp, you have to slope it all the way back to the five-one slopes. Crossovers, most of the crossovers, if not all the crossovers, actually go through the dunes. The crossover's originally built and maintained when the federal dunes were first put in. So, if you've walked over your crossovers, you see, you look either side, and there's sand piled on each side that towns go in and scrape away. When they do the sand harvest, they're going to come in, they're going to shorten the length of those crossovers, and they're going to be left at the proper slopes that we have, I think it's what, seven-to-one and 12-to-one. So, leave them at those slopes, they'll pull back those dunes, except for any of the ADA crossovers, they're not allowed to go anywhere near the ADA crossovers. There's a lot more construction that goes into those. When they pull back the crossovers, the contractor will, any fence that they remove that's in good shape, they'll stockpile and leave behind for Stone Borough to use in the future. And the last bullet, I mentioned the slopes for the pedestrian and vehicle crossovers, they'll be, have to leave them at our standards, seven-to-one and 12-to-one. Now, all that text that I just read over, tried to simplify it with a graphic for you. I've been told a pitch is worth 1,000 words, so. And this graphic, if you, it's probably easier to see with what you have printed in front of you, but there's this red line that goes this way, that's kind of what you have out there now as far as your dune. This yellow area here, yellow orange area, that would be what our federal design template is. This yellow is, that's the two-foot buffer that I talked about that we're staying off of. So, contractor would go and they'd harvest this sand that's in green, and they wouldn't go any further back into the dune other than what's this green area here. What they'll do is they'll use bulldozers, excavators will make piles, they'll sift it, they'll clean it out, and then they'll use bulldozers and they'll just push the sand seaward, and they'll extend that berm out. How far will they go? Depends on how much sand's in that line. The way the contract was written, for the most part, they're going to stay in the same general area, so they're not going to truck the sand five blocks away from where they actually excavate the sand, it's going to stay in that general same area when they push it out. When they push it out, they'll eventually hit the water line, and then the ocean's going to create that slope and the profile that Mother Nature wants on that seaward edge. So, you could see a lot of, you're still going to have, you know, more than what is on the federal dune template, and we're not going back. So, some of these profiles, you see that the sand that's accumulated is much higher on this backside, and that sand will all stay. So, we're all just on the seaward edge of that. Yes, sir?
So, also, one thing to note here is in areas where our design templates, so the mustard-colored dune portion, if it's below the criteria, that is a design help-all, we would ensure that the contractor in the reach of work would be bringing that back up to meet our federal design template. There are a few areas, no, sorry, I think there are a few areas that might be a little lower or a tiny bit narrower, which do have a minimum sand being happening over time, and all the sand actually being out in a four-dune, some of the traps in the four-dune across the design.
Okay, so, you know, what's the area in real life that we're talking about? Here's two photos, I apologize, I don't have what street ends they're at, you might be able to recognize the houses. But back here is our federal dune along here. You can see all these rows of sand fence that have been put in and sand started to accumulate in front of that dune. Well, that's that four-dune area, and that's sand that we would be harvesting out. Same on this side. Printout, you can actually see the clean rows of dune grass that are planted, almost looks like a crop that's been planted. Well, that's the federal dune, that's when they go and they plant the seagrass, you could tell just the way it's the straight rows. So, that's a federal dune. Over here, the four dunes higher than that, and that's all the sand that we'd be taking out. Imagine all the vegetation that's on there would have to be cleaned out, as well as any of that sand fence in there would have to be removed as well. So, that's in real life, the areas that we're talking about.
Question, Grant, can you tell, recognize the streets that we're looking at?
The one on the left is 112th.
So, I thought, and the one on the right?
I'm not too sure.
Eighty-fifth? Thank you.
Now, I've been talking a lot about the berm, and that's where we're going to push the sand from the dune into the berm. It's not the best printed graphic, but it was showing you different types of, different states of a berm. The one on the bottom would show kind of where we are now, that we don't really have a constructed berm. It's eroded since 2017 when we were here. This yellow line is, or this black line here is kind of what the federal template would be. So, that's what we want to, that's what we've designed it to be at a minimum at all times. You go up to this top slide, you get this orange line, and it shows sand in front of that black line, that's our advanced nourishment. That's when we come in, that's what the sand that we want to put out there on the beach, and that's going to erode over time. And when it gets back to that black line, that's the trigger when we need to come back and put more sand on it. It will, it's considered sacrificial, and that wedge up there is going to erode and come back. Right now, if we're back, you know, we're down here, we're not quite the federal template or even down here where a lot of it's eroded away. So, that sand we're going to push out is going to push that berm out and create that sacrificial layer before the wave energy can get to the dunes. So, that's just another graphic of when we start talking about berms of what we're looking at. Okay, schedule and timing. So, we've already awarded a contract for this project to Great Lakes Dock and Dredge. They're the same company that was out in 2017 and did the work. The way the contract structure is a base part, we're obligated to pay, that's work right now that's up in Avalon. Stone Harbor is listed as an option in the contract, so the government has a right to either exercise that option or not. It's fully at the government's discretion what we do with that. The option that we have, again, they're in Stone Harbor for, we have options for the northern borough area for 50,000 cubic yards, we have an option for the northern area for 100,000 cubic yards, and we have an option for the southern borough area for 50,000 cubic yards. We can award one option, we could award all three options, and then there's a few more in there having to do with dune grass and reinstallation of sand fence in the areas that we work at. So, timing of this, in October, we need to have a decision whether or not we're going to exercise these options. By contract, I have 21 days from when Great Lakes submits a pre-construction survey, which this week they're supposed to be out surveying, this week and possibly next week. They're motivated to get this project done, so they're trying to get the surveys done as quick as they can, and they have several other contracts along the Jersey Shore, so they're motivated to move forward with it. By contract, if I don't exercise that option with 21 days, it goes away. So, now that's 21 days to actually exercise it. If you've all dealt with contracts, you know a decision has to be made much before that 21 days to actually modify the contract. So, we don't have a whole lot of time to decide whether or not this is what we're, if we're going to exercise these options or not. Now, if we exercise the options, the contractor's estimated it's about 30 days to do 50,000 cubic yards. So, if we're to do 150,000 cubic yards, and I'm just saying if we do 100 for one and 50 the other, we're looking about 90 days once they start that work. So, that'd be November, December, and into January. By the contract, we did not give them additional time for this work, so all work would have to be done by end of January. That's, it had to be completely off the beach, demobilized, and everything turned back over to the community by the end of January. And that's regardless of we do one option or four options. That date is by contract, they have to be done. So, that's kind of the schedule and timing that we're looking at. And I think the next slide was really just discussion. I know it's a lot to try to comprehend all at once, I know it took us a while to design it, so if there's questions that you all have, Chris and I would, happy to try to answer.
I just wanted to add a few, some of the things to this work that's being done to harvest and re-communicate the sand is being done by a subcontractor, Arna Henry. And they've done work with us before, they usually are pretty good out there, and they're very grateful of the work that they do. Included in that work, as Eric said, we had options to reinstall sand fence in the areas where we removed sand fence, and also reestablish the grass plantings. If we all decide to choose to exercise the options, including the sand fence, sand fence would be in place by the timeframe again in January. The only thing that might lag is the grass plantings, but seeing that January is the time when plants are dormant, there's a possibility that the plantings could happen soon as we're going right in. There's sometimes a lag of plants that are not dormant yet, and also fertilizing plants, but that should probably be occurring about the same time.
I have a question. How do you know the federal design template is, I don't want to say the word accurate, but how do you know that that is an effective tool to design and develop the project you've just outlined?
Okay, before we built the project, we underwent a feasibility study, which looked at the economics behind it, we would look at various options, we modeled different berm, whis, berm heights, dune heights, and looked at different scenarios during that feasibility process. Through that whole study is where we come up with that the recommended, this is the federal design template. So, when the studies were done, we took a look at all that information, various surveys, historical data, and various models.
Okay, thank you.
I had seen one criticism of the project saying that there, and see, that we free of debris prior to placement of the berm, that there was some concern that there could be wood pieces and little metal pieces from disintegrated dune fencing from the past. Is that something to be concerned about?
Well, the contractor has responsibility to make sure it's free of that debris.
Okay.
We met with them last week, and they're bringing in a sifter to sort through it.
Okay.
It is somewhat unknown, a lot of the sand fence is buried, so we don't know the true condition of the sand fence.
Right.
But in other projects, we've had to remove sand fence, it comes out in big chunks.
Okay.
But the contractor's obligated to make sure it's free of debris.
And the way that they described that they were going to do their work was that part of the process is they were going to peel off the top layer to get the vegetation out so that they could sift that sand and ensure that that top 12 and 18 inches was getting disposed of properly, and that sand was being, the degree that was going to get pulled from that 12 to 18 inches would also be pulled out. But then from that point forward, it appeared that they were going to work at stages, knowing that some of the sand fence is installed periodically and spaced out based upon the accretion that happened. So, there are thoughts, and obviously, things can change once you've left the field of excavating stuff, but when they were doing it, they would be able to excavate out sections in front, should be able to have a better shot, pulling the stuff out, which is having less formidable of an impact where you might break the things up and, you know, the explosion part. I mean, the way these dunes have built over time and the layers, it's it's foreseeable that that could be a good way to get this out, and it should work for the most part, you know, but there are things that happen.
Can you elaborate about the actual timing of the project? As far as why, how it was decided as to when it would be done?
So how we got to where we are now with the timing? So the, this project's on a three-year nourishment cycle. Which means it qualifies for federal funding three years from the last time it received funding. So our funding was actually FY '16, the last time we were there. So we received funding in FY '19. So we were, the Armory Corps was notified in, I think it was probably January timeframe, that we were going to get funding for the Townsend Inlet to Cape May Inlet project as a whole. When we get money at the federal government, we have expectations that that money will be obligated before the end of the fiscal year. So we had a deadline of by September 30th, I would have a contract awarded for the Townsend, again, for the whole project, Townsend Inlet to Cape May Inlet Project. Typically, we try to work on these beach nourishment projects as best we can after Labor Day, and we try to wrap them up before, usually beginning of March, when we start getting some environmental windows. So, when we receive money in January, it's at the discretion of Congress when they appropriate money for these projects. So once we got in January, I think we met out here in June or so to talk about the sand harvest concept. We came out, we were looking at the dunes and seeing what we could do in Stone Harbor absent being able to dredge in Hereford Inlet. So that led to having a contract awarded, I think it's about two weeks ago when the contract was awarded.
I want to add one thing too. So knowing that we had this issue with the Hereford and the Barrow area, when we found out we got the money back earlier this year, we were looking at other options, a bunch of alternatives. We were looking at harvesting the sand from Townsend Inlet like we did last time. Part of the problem there was the cost and the available amount of sand that was there. Because last time we had the, having to take most of the sand from the Townsend Inlet. So recharge our rate, we hadn't been there yet, but it's happening before we recovered to cover those projects. We also were looking at the Barrow area offshore of Love Island that they used for the Seattle City Stratton area project. And again, it came down to funding. Also with that, we had additional permits because that Barrow area off Love Island was specifically identified and authorized for the Seattle City Stratton area project in Southern Ocean City. But at the end of the day, it worked out, or this was the option that we had. We didn't have a sand beach replenishment option available to us. So that's why we were going at this.
I think that this all began a while ago when we were having a natural resource meeting, and I don't want to sound ungrateful, trust me, because you gentlemen are amazing. When you were concerned that the dunes were getting higher, and it seems to be that your concern now is that the crossovers that we have, the sand is blowing year-round in preventing them from, you've got to pull it out, move it, whatever. I sort of understand most of this project. I am just trying to visualize taking and scraping the precious dunes, at least in the fall. But I'm still, I'm listening, I know you guys are on our side. I just hope that everybody would start to ask some more questions because I think this is a big decision, I really do. We've built up our dunes over the years. Some of them are wider, some of them are higher. I think the visual impact, if someone doesn't understand what is happening, might be alarming to the community. And that's something that I'm thinking about. And I know that your gentlemen that were at that meeting have not done this before, and I think that they are very tedious with what they're talking about doing. It's just, do you understand what I'm saying? Thank you.
It's a pilot project.
Yeah.
It really is, one of the constraints we have elsewhere on other projects, and even with this one, is management of sand within the system. We don't always have the sand available for our areas. When we have these offshore Barrow areas, they don't get punished like Inlets do.
Mm-hmm.
So other resource agencies are pushing us to look at ways to think outside the box and manage the sand within the system. And, you know, this, we thought was an opportunity to present it to the municipality as an option to allow us not being able to.
Right, and I know you've been extremely creative with it. And I was just thinking that, and I know, I don't know the amount of money that this is going to cost, but is, could that be headed toward the borough to help us figure out our crossovers a better way? You don't have to answer that question, I don't want to get you in trouble.
Well, what I can say is for this go-around.
Right, okay. Just a creative thought, I know that that's what our concern is, is that it's a longer walk to some beaches, and there's some little mounds and things that accumulate on the crossovers, and it's our job to keep it walkable, passable, whatever.
As I say, without emergency supplemental funding, which we've used in the community before, the next time we receive funding for this project would be FY 2022. Because we got it in '19, so three years.
If we were to try to come up with some creative ideas, something that's completely 180 of what was in the bid package and what the other companies been on, you have potential for protests if you start going outside of what was in that scope of work.
I do.
Sleeping at night trying to think.
I try to sleep at night, too.
So the federal dune, in one of these slides here, is roughly 75 feet wide?
Approximately a little bit bigger, depends on what the existing elevation is in the back and what the elevation is.
So 75 to 100, somewhere in there, through the length. See, we're, I think, you know, our mindset is the bigger the dune, the better. I mean, at least that's my mindset. And, you know, we were looking at the sea level rising. We just raised all our bulkhead heights. We're spending a lot of money trying to control flooding. And all of a sudden, we're going to be scraping dunes down. And it's like, it's counterintuitive to what we're trying to do here, so it's going to.
I guess what the question is, what will the impact be if we do have a storm, now that we're taking the vegetation out and putting new fence in, and having disturbed the compaction of the dunes right now, if we do have a storm?
In the fall, yeah.
I guess that's your concern, part of the concern.
So, what we'll be doing is we're extending that berm further out. So that berm's going to be that first, you used the term earlier, sacrificial layer. So that's what the wave energy is going to hit first and start to erode your berm. So it's going to take longer for these storms to get to your dunes. Yes, your dunes are going to be lower. You get a large enough storm out there, you do have less dune that's going to, you know, that could erode away. We made sure that we were never going to go below what the project was originally designed for. So when we originally built the project in 2004, you're going to have that same protection plus a little bit more because we have that buffer in there as well. You know, it all depends on the type of the storm, how frequent, do we have three nor'easters right in a row? You know, typically, in the winter months, you do tend to lose a little bit of the sand, goes out into what I, that sandbar area that I talked about earlier. And then summer, it comes back onto the beach. But you're never going to go below, this construction is not going to take you below what the project was originally designed to perform at.
See, we have to consider that was 2004. So, storms are more frequent now, I believe, a little bit more intense. And they're only going to get worse, I think, I believe, that's what I believe, anyway. So, is the 2004 template adequate? You know, let me, Grant went one way, let me go the other way. So what are we risking if we don't do this? If we just decide to leave it like it is? What's the downside to doing that?
You know, what downsides, you're going to have smaller berm with. I mean, that's the, you know, we're increasing that flat beach area in front of the dune. So.
So if you have a smaller berm, does that mean you're increasing our risk of actually affecting our protected dune?
Given the right storm, the wave energy is going to hit the dune sooner, but you have more sand in your dune. So it's, there is, you know, it's a trade-off.
The area that you're looking to take down, is that typically the last area that would get hit by a storm?
No, it's the first area. It should be the first area that would get hit by a storm once the beach has been eroded away and the sandbar system.
Okay.
Using 94th Street slide as an example, if I look at this, just a point of clarification. If I draw two straight lines vertically from the Barrow area, from the Fordoon, it looks like roughly, we're going to be creating, if we do this on 94th Street as illustrated here, we'll be creating roughly 50 feet more flat, usable, if you will, area of beach.
It could vary, it could be, it could be more, it could be less, depending on how much sand is available. As you go, and as you see there, as you go up and down the beach, some sections of dune have a lot more sand than others. So that width would vary, depending on where you're at. But using that 94th Street profile that was on there, yeah, that's, you're probably right. Because you're going to be filling out to match the 7.25, and it's also going to be filling that void of what has been eroded below that 7.25.
I have a question. Looking at that one slide that you had, the color there, is it safe to say that the width of the dunes is going to be less?
Excuse me, is that, did you name it? Before, first, let's say if we want to, is Councilwoman going to announce a follow-up for questions?
I was just going to ask one thing.
So let's continue with council discussion, and then we can.
Because I'm not comfortable scientifically, but we do have a scientist in the room. Would it be out of line for us to call upon our resident consultant for these kinds of things, just to ask her opinion at this time? Briefly, what she's thinking? If you wouldn't mind sharing that with us, Lenore.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, this is a tough question, for sure. I, like Ray, think that it's, at the first blush, it's hard to think that we'd want to make our dunes smaller. I think when, I think this is a Band-Aid at best, it's not really sustainable. I kind of think your dunes are your bank account, if you want to think about it that way. And you're going to be making a fairly large withdrawal from that account, and then hoping you kind of get through. If I looked at, I pulled Stu Farrell's report, he does your beach nourishment. He's showing, for the last several years, on average, you lost almost 200,000 cubic yards of sand each season until last year. So if you were to spend all this time, cut back your dunes, put that sand back on the beach during the winter, when we know that's when the sand tends to move most, you may not actually even have that sand when it comes time to be enjoying your beaches. So my first concern is related to destabilizing your dunes, making them narrower. Yeah, it could be a great winter, we may not have any storms, and this could work great. But there's no way to know about that. So I think it's, the timing and the exposure to risk is extremely high, in my opinion. I think there are a couple other things here as well. The first one, I'm a sedimentologist, I work on sediments, which is weird, so the sand. The sand that's in your dunes is there because it blew there. It blew there because it's finer and smaller particle size than the sand that's on the beach. So by definition, your dune sand is going to be more subject to moving and eroding with waves and currents, even without storms. That sand moved off the beach and went into the dunes because it didn't want to be on the beach. So I think there's, I don't know if you've done the grain size analysis to that, but there's always a like-on-like rule for beaches. You know, you know how hard it is to put sand on the beaches? This sand, by definition, is finer than the sand that's on your beach. So I think those are all challenges, I think it's a risk. The interesting thing to me, that I quoted those numbers from Stu's report in 2013, '14, he said you lost 188,000 cubic yards. 2014, '15, you lost 300,000 cubic yards. 2015, '16, 292,000 cubic yards. These are from Stu Farrell's reports, this is not my work. This is Stu's reports to the state of the beaches that you all do. In 2016, '17, you had the renourishment. That renourishment was 800,000 cubic yards of sand. So you're talking about moving a fairly small amount of sand at fairly significant risk to your dunes. Last year, you actually only lost about 46,000 cubic yards of sand. So, all said and done, according to Stu's report, your beaches are actually in pretty good shape. I just don't think, you won't have another 100,000, 150,000 cubic yards to take from your dunes if you need it again next year. So I just don't see that withdrawal from your bank account being sustainable as a source and a solution for the sand needs of the borough. And then I'll just finish with my other concern, is I know the borough spends a lot of time over the years, working with the community, with property owners and with visitors, to talk about how important the dunes are, how important dune vegetation is, and how maintaining these dunes are. And I just feel like there's going to be a lot of unintended messaging consequences that you're going to have to figure out how to talk about when the borough then thinks that they don't have to respect the vegetation in the dunes. I just don't know how you, how do you transfer that to the public? It's okay for you all to eat the dunes, but they can't. I think there's going to be a lot to that. So I think it's risky, obviously, that's your choice. This is, and you're coming into a winter season. The 2004 template, I will just reiterate, Ray's dead on. The 2004 template was also at a design elevation at a lower sea level and with a different storm set. But all those vary, the storms vary annually. Like I said, it could work great, you might not have any problems. But you are going to destabilize the vegetation on those dunes, and that doesn't come back any year. It takes a long time. So you have some of the best dunes up and down the state, they're healthy, they're strong. I would, if my recommendation would be to leave that alone and kind of wait, you're not in that bad of shape. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you. And that confirms what I was thinking, as soon as Ray said what he did, my reaction was, what we have now works with the dunes. Are we going to gamble? And that was exactly the term you used. But I would relinquish that decision to someone like you who has more of a scientific background than I admittedly do.
Yeah, and I think Stu Farrell had some comments as well. He's certainly extremely qualified, and he works with your, he's been working with your beaches for decades, and I think he's shared some similar concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, are you waiting for direction from the borough of Stone Harbor? And then that option would not be exercised? What is your timeline on that?
So, to kind of tie that loop a little bit, the, so like Eric said, they expect to have surveys ongoing this week and next week. If they submit them next week, it's likely that we would have to make a decision by the 20th, around that time? We have till 20th of October. We have, we would like to make it sooner, but obviously, we don't expect you to make a decision right now. I mean, if you did, so be it.
We had a council meeting on the 15th of October.
So what we would do, what we would do is, if you were going to move forward with working with this, we have a state aid agreement that we've already started working on. We shared some of the numbers as far as the municipalities' obligations for cost estimates and stuff like that. What we would need to have the borough do is draft a resolution indicating that you're willing to partner in the project, support the project, and then also a commit to executing the state aid agreement with us. So, that would be something that I think, maybe if you guys were making a decision on it at the meeting at the 15th, it's something that you draft up ahead of time. And in this way, if you guys are good with it, we can move forward, get you state aid agreement, we could work with Great Lakes to exercise the options that we need to exercise and move forward. And if the borough chooses to not do it, then we can move forward with what other avenues we need to deal with, with Great Lakes and the subcontractors.
So it's not a matter of this is your decision to make? This is the borough of Stone Harbor's decision?
This is the borough of Stone Harbor's decision to make. We don't want to, like we said, it's a pilot project. We were trying to find another avenue for you guys as far as some engineering, dealing with some engineering issues. If the borough is uncomfortable with doing that, we respect that decision. And there's valid reasons. And there's valid reasons for both, you know? And it's just weighing which ones outweigh the others. Again, like we said, we don't, we're not in the business to shove something down your throat. I wish we had five hundred thousand yards of sand that we were throwing out to make it wider.
So do I. Me too.
But...
So, okay, so then we will deliver any questions that people have or further concerns, whatever, which filters for Jill and we can move forward with the decision.
But I think we would need the borough to have the decision made by the fifteenth, for sure. Yeah, just so we're not in conflict with the contract and...
Okay.
You know, and, and between now and then, we can work with the administration on providing you guys with any additional information you need. And in this way, you have everything prepared for you when you have the next meeting.
Is it, is it feasible with the contract to do one site? I mean, you referred to this as a pilot program. Like if we, if we opted, and I'm not saying we are, probably, probably aren't, but if we opted to do one hundred and fifteenth, two hundred and twenty-first, is that something we, you could do? Or just do that one area?
Sure.
And see how, how it works out?
Yeah, that, that, that's something that we could do. If that's what you're, if you're willing to do that and the borough is going to support something like that, absolutely. The, if we were to choose a lower quantity option in the north area, I will warn you that the subcontractor provided a unit cost that was double that for what would be a hundred thousand yards. So it's going to cost us the same to move fifty thousand in the northern reach as it would be to do the whole hundred thousand. They wanted to make sure that if they were doing it, they were getting that money because that reach is a little bit further away from some of the access points. You know, one hundred and twenty-third street is going to probably be the best access point for getting the heavy equipment on and off. One hundred and eleventh they can use, but we try to be careful around that because of the asphalt pipe. Sometimes that crossover is a little steeper. So one hundred and twenty-third tends to be the best one. Also, there's a, if you're doing a smaller quantity, there's other risks that are involved. So that's why they, they jacked up the unit costs for just a smaller amount at the north end. So if you choose to do something like that, there are some avenues for us to do.
And, and I think this, this project requires some financial input from the borough, correct? So, I mean, if, if, if we decide as a governing body not to pursue this...
Yeah, no, there's a financial obligation.
And if we, now, and if we, you know, with Public Works, need to reroute some accesses because of this accumulation of sand, that Public Works is continuously fighting to keep these things open, Public Works would have to work with you to get permission to do some of that? Is that, would that be a problem?
So that's, and, and I wanted to mention that before and I forgot. The good thing is, and it happens in a lot of towns, but not all towns, but Stone Harbor's Public Works has been great with me throughout all, back when Greg and Harry Wozunk were the guys running the show, they would always come to us and try to vet through us, what's the best thing, number one, to not have a negative impact on the project? And number two, to have a better understanding of what your permits are and what you're allowed to do with your permits, within your permits. So coordination with us would be good if you're doing something on your own afterwards. You could, all likelihood, would need a permit for some of this stuff. We were able to move forward with doing this pilot project because it was considered maintenance and operations of the project template by way Land Use reviewed our federal consistency determination, which is our permit that we have for this project. If the municipality was doing it on their own and not through the contractor and under the oversight of the Corps in our office, they may not be so willing to let you use our permit to do that work. So that's one thing to consider because permit fees, your regular beach and dune maintenance permit that you have doesn't allow you to do some of the creative stuff outside of a one-foot skimming of the beach and typical sand fence placement. You were allowed to clear and do some stuff around the crossovers, what you've been doing for the most part. But once you start wanting to move large quantities of sand, especially in a dune, it's heavily regulated and would most likely need a CAFRA permit and maybe a waterfront development permit, which you're talking a tune of thirty, forty thousand dollars if you're doing both and you're doing a large reach because it's based upon your surface area that you're impacting, the parcels you're working in. So even if you're working on one block, if your parcel's two hundred acres, you're paying for the maximum cost because this parcel is so big. So it just depends on where you want to do the work and stuff like that. So just things to think about if you want to do some stuff on your own afterwards. And we're willing to provide insight and help out. And if you're going through a permitting process, we're willing to give some feedback to Land Use and to Corps Regulatory if you need an Army Corps of Engineers permit to help the process go smoothly, to ensure, you know, that it's not having injurious effect on our project and the beach and dune system as well. Thank you.
We usually in the work sessions do not have public comment. Sir, are you staying for the council meeting as you can? Okay, in the public comments section at four thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll record those comments and translate them back to us? Okay.
You'll be the person that...
Okay, okay. Wasn't sure if you wanted us to hang.
Oh, I would love to, if you will. I agree, you would have to be on your way, but if you stay and then anybody who has any comments would be coming up at that first public comment at four thirty.
You would do it during the first public comment?
Yes, first public. Well, so if somebody comes up, there's public comments meeting. Right? Yeah, we got a doc hearing and then would be public comment.
So it's a question that we can go back and answer, we're not obligated to answer right at the moment.
Yeah, you would, yeah, right, you would just hear a public comment. Yes.
It's going to be a tough agenda to get through. Natural Resources budget. Ah, do I have to move?
It won't be the same way, it will be a condensed version.
Okay.
Want to take that pass around everybody?
Okay, Natural Resource budget was the only one that we were not able to get to prior. I am passing a hard copy out for, for everyone on council. That's okay. But I just wanted to point out, A and F, we met and we talked about the format and the form and the recommendation was to concentrate on, on the form for what we're requesting in 2020. The remainder four years of that five-year plan will be, actually be incorporated into our management plan. So what you're going to see now will be, we've got 2017 actual expenditures, 2018 actual. You'll see the 2019 budget and what has been spent year to date so far and what the department is requesting in 2020. And I am going back in and putting all this information in for all the other departments. So this is the first that you go around seeing, seeing this format. What I wanted to highlight here for Natural Resources is where the increases are and it's primarily in the Bird Sanctuary expenses. And the, the biggest part is for the Fragmites Management Plan and then new item underwater level monitoring. And Lenore is here, if you have any questions from the Bird Sanctuary Committee for those expenses, she can elaborate a little bit more on that. But the professional fees, the cost is remaining the same for this. We're anticipating the stewardship program again at fifteen thousand. The Bird Sanctuary tours for a thousand. And the environmental restoration and management coordination through the wetlands at twenty-five thousand again. And that, like I said, that, that in itself is the biggest expense within this budget other than under Bird Sanctuary where you look at, under the Fragmites Management Plan, we're appropriating seventy-two hundred in 2020 and three thousand three hundred and twenty for the water level monitoring. Anybody have any questions on that or need any Lenore to explain anything else in it? How about, as far as the format and the information that we're presenting to you? Does that, you think that gives you enough information?
Excellent.
Good. I aim to please.
You did good.
Okay. And that's it. And I will shut that down and the mayor can sit back in her seat.
Okay, moving on, special event, Jenny. Harvest Festival approval for October fifteenth.
Yeah, I have one special event application. It's on your agenda, I don't know if you have an actual copy of the application though because the completed application we didn't receive until this past Friday. But it is in circulation right now amongst the department heads. This is a Chamber of Commerce event. It's the annual Kids Harvest Festival. The actual date of the event is Saturday, October twenty-sixth, eleven to four P M. The setup though will start at, at nine A M. Two hundred block on Ninety-sixth Street. They haven't re, it's Chamber of Commerce, there's no street closure or parking restrictions that have been requested, but they have requested for Public Works to run a hayride from eight, eleven-thirty to three-thirty. They do this annually, it picks up at the firehouse, heads south on First Avenue to one hundred and eleventh street and then back on Second Avenue. They'll have four vendors on Ninety-sixth Street, one at each of the nodes. And the app, like I said, the application is circulating among the department heads. A certificate of insurance has been provided. And so we'll be just looking for the approval at the next council meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we'll put it on for two weeks. Okay. Any questions for Jenny on this? Okay, thank you. In the interest of time, we're going to save the reporting for last and move on to the four things you see down at the bottom. Ordinance changes for streets and sidewalks.
Can we, I'm sorry, ma'am, can we jump to the zoning ordinance change? Only because I know Ray has a prior commitment.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
If we want, if you wanted to go back to the one right before that, I have the report for Suzanne Brown anyways on the, and if I could just do the borough portion of that. I start teaching CCD tonight, so I got to get to...
Okay, understood.
Okay, the ordinance change with regards to streets and sidewalks. From the borough's standpoint, and Mark de Blasio will go over his engineering standpoint, I'm not shorting it, but I listed there's seventeen steps taken in the street and sidewalk ordinance that is part of what, we have approximately six employees within the borough that are involved in those steps. Suzanne does several of them, Patty Wagner does several of them. It goes back and forth to the borough engineer several times. Right now, in that ordinance, the borough receives one hundred dollars. And in lieu of what Councilman Daleahan was saying la, last meeting about maybe reducing budgets within departments, how about if we take our budget and with all the hands-on work that we do, we, I would like to increase from one hundred dollars at least to two fifty because we, we spend hours per street opening permit between all of the employees that touch this. From, all the way from depositing the checks in the bank to going back and forth, Patty's recording, dealing with the contractors, seventeen steps we do for, for a fee of one hundred dollars within the borough. So that's my stance as a borough employee for our portion of the street opening permit. Okay, and then the other, the, to explain the non-conforming lots. On September sixteenth of nineteen eighty-six, that's the date that the borough changed a standard-sized lot in an A and B residential district for single-family homes from fifty to sixty feet. The grandfather clause states, any lot improved with a dwelling substantially constructed by September sixteenth in nineteen eighty-six, which fully complied with the zoning ordinance in existence on that day, may be altered to, added to, reconstructed or torn down in a substitute dwelling in its stead. And so long as the resulting dwelling complies with all the provisions of the zoning chapter with exception of the lot area requirement and the lot furniture, which went into effect on that date. My interpretation of that ordinance, which is the current ordinance that I just read, is that a structure built after that date was non-conforming because that ordinance says before that date a structure. And so that structure built after that date, it was my interpretation, could not be torn down and a substitute dwelling replaced in its stead. And I refused a couple of teardowns because of the way I was interpreting that ordinance. So Andrew Katniss, through the planning board, we discussed at a planning board, he rewrote the ordinance stating that any structure that existed prior to that date on a fifty-foot lot could be torn down and replaced at any time. So even if the structure was built after that date, if that, if, if there was a structure on that lot at the time, it could be torn down. And so ba, basically, that's what the rewording does of that ordinance. So that an undersized, what is now an undersized fifty-foot lot in an A and B residential zone could always be torn down and reconstructed. The original intent, I'm told, that the ordinance was originally designed to prevent subdivision of undersized lots. Not, not to prevent teardowns and reconstructions. And so that's the way I understand the original ordinance and the rewrite of that ordinance.
Questions for Ray?
Just one clarification, I always throw this in here, is that this also takes into account that any new structure has to conform to all aspects of our zoning. So that's, there's no non-conformity continuance, so...
Right.
Obviously, all ordinance setbacks, coverage, everything has to be adhered to.
With the exception of lot furniture and lot area.
Exactly.
For a fifty foot, for a fifty-foot lot. Now, if it was a smaller than fifty, that was even non-conforming back then in those two residential zones.
So it's only applying to the fifty-foot lots?
Fifty-foot lots in an A and B residential.
Okay.
Isolated lots, how many isolated lots do we have? That word is in there also. Well, it's over, in the...
In the new...
It's all someplace. Over on the page that says ordinance amending five sixty dash thirty-five. It talks about pre-existing isolated undersized lots. Do we really have...
Oh, isolated means if you take the, the convent, the, the retreat house, those lots are, are contiguous to each other. So that doesn't count. It would be a, a lot sitting here or a lot sitting over here. When, when two lots are adjoining, they're contiguous to each other. So it, it rules that out and they got to be designed to the sixty-foot, which is part of the, the, yeah, re, re-zoning or, or site, development, site plan development.
Isolated really just means non-contiguous ownership. So there's no opportunity to actually conform with the new ordinance as per nineteen eighty-six. So it just rules that possibility out.
Which I don't know that we have any, a lot of isolated lots?
Oh, there's a, a real lot of them, yeah.
That'd be nice to know, yeah.
Anymore for Ray? Anymore on the sidewalks for Ray? Are you going to weigh in on that?
So we, we just looked at the revisions from two standpoints, a fee standpoint and a procedural standpoint. Ray spoke to procedural. On the fee end, when I helped write the ordinance back in two thousand four or five, that ordinance was taken from another local municipality and the fees that were in there were from the late nineties. So our fee structure is about twenty years old. So we had made recommendations on the fee structure to put it in alignment with some other local municipalities. And Ray articulated very well, the process is pretty cumbersome. So we tried to clean that up for efficiency standpoint.
And we have copies of everything that you are, right now, that all of council with the copies of the ordinance changes. And we have copies of everything that you are, right now, that all of council with the copies of the ordinance changes, the proposed ordinance changes?
Yes, it's in your packet.
To the thousand-dollar inspection fee, that's changed as well, right?
Correct, it's going more, it's going from an escrow base to a fee.
Oh, but it's the same amount?
No, it's. No, that's increasing.
That's increasing because we, we actually, per the ordinance, we're supposed to call the engineer out to look at the forms. First he does the paperwork, part of this process, then we call him to look at the forms before they pour. And then we're supposed to call him a year later before we return any sureties to make sure that the ground hasn't sunken, that there's no holes or anything in the street. The way it works right now, there is no money left in the account to send him back a year later to release sureties. Because, because it's just getting eaten up in the administrative and the initial inspections by the borough engineer.
Yeah, because it was only four hundred, so really it was only three hundred for the engineer, because a hundred was coming to the borough. Now we're saying two fifty goes to the borough, and then the thousand dollars is the fee for the engineer to do the several inspections.
And then procedurally, we're trying to set up an escrow for the utility company, so they deposit money in one shot, instead of each depositing a hundred and twenty separate checks. There's sep, a hundred and tw, we have about a hundred and twenty-five street openings a year. They have to bookkeep every single one of them on the line item. Sometimes they gotta ask for more money. Sometimes they have to send five dollars and thirty-eight cents back, and they spend hours on it. So we're trying to streamline it to help them internally as well.
Questions?
I can speak from experience, the, what's involved. Ray's, he's spot on. It's, it's involved. It's a process. The fee of a hundred dollars woefully low, so.
And this, what I've explained here, if I went through all the steps, that's in a perfect world, if every step goes in order. The minute one little hiccup is in that process, phone calls start going, Patty gets, um, trying to keep her book straight if something happens. So, so the seventeen steps are, if it goes in order.
And it never does.
No. Only, only the builders that have been here for a while does it work the way it's supposed to.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna see them come forward October fifteenth for introduction, so plenty of time if you need clarification to reach out. Okay, thanks, Ray.
Good. Any other questions?
Anything else for Ray? Um.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. County Board of Health Shared Services Agreement.
Solicitors looked at that, and that will come forth on the fifteenth also.
Okay. Everybody have a chance to review it? Have any questions before that comes forth next meeting? Hundred and Fourth Street Bridge, couple of no parking signs appeared. I don't know how many of you saw them, but I just wanted to make sure, bring it to everybody's attention, that they were installed by the county, and then we were notified that they were installed by the county. And I did reach out to the solicitor, or asked Jill to reach out, to see what statute that the police department would need as far as enforcement of that, and to see if we need to make any changes to our ordinances that cover parking, so.
And we do not, there's a state statute that covers the bridges, so we're good.
So nothing's gonna require any ordinance changes, we don't have to do any introduction, okay? And everyone just be advised, there's no parking signs that have recently gone up around the Hundred and Fourth Street Bridge. Thank you, County of Cape May. Okay, we can bounce back up. Let's get to Jill, let's update everybody on the administrator position.
Okay.
Sorry for jumping around, I'm watching the clock, and we're getting it all in. So for anyone who is unaware, February first, Jill Goucher will be a retired person.
Yes, I will.
For anyone who is unaware of that, and we have begun our selection process. We were accepting, how long did we, I think we advertised for roughly six weeks?
Yeah, right around six weeks.
So go ahead.
Okay, um, so I've put, all of the applications have been in a Dropbox file for all of council to review. I've asked everyone to get to me by October tenth, what you consider your top ten candidates for consideration. I will tally that up, and then on October the fifteenth, we will go into closed session. You will discuss it amongst yourselves and develop hopefully a list of five candidates to interview. As long as everyone is available, we will hold a special meeting, go into closed session to interview the top five candidates on Saturday, November the second. With council's input, I will develop a list of questions to be posed to all the candidates. The suggestion from A and F was that I would actually ask the questions of each candidate, and then we would open it up at the very end, if anybody had any other questions, comments to the applicants. And then if everything goes according to schedule, at the latest, we would appoint someone at the December third meeting, or hopefully the second meeting in November, if you guys are able to pick somebody. So that pretty much summarizes the process. And again, I just wanna make sure that everyone is available on November second. So if that date is okay, then Sue would advertise it as a special meeting. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's a special executive session meeting, will not be open to the public.
Correct, you will open it up as a regular meeting, close it, vote on going into closed session, so then.
And then conduct the interviews.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that process?
I do. Are you envisioning having the five candidates selected together in one room, asking the questions of them?
No, you would do one individual, finish that person, and then the next person would come in.
Did you think about possibly doing the interviews the same way that we did the interviews for candidates for Borough Council, where it's two-on-one, and the people circulate from room to room?
No, we have not considered that.
No. I mean, that's up to, to you guys.
I think that would take an awfully long time.
Do you think it'd take more time to do that than to?
Well, also too, I mean, in a position such as this, I think it's important that everybody hears the same answer at the same time and any follow-up question that a council person may have to an answer given. So we all will be hearing literally the same exact answers. I think it's important that we do.
When, um, when I was selected, that's, that's exactly what council did. There was only three applicants at that time, and I'm saying five, I mean, you may narrow it down to three. I don't know until we go into, and start discussing it, but the three candidates last time, each came in, had their interview individually. One person would come in, the other one would go out that door, so we actually never even saw each other. So I would envision doing it the same way, but since I'm open.
And as I said before, everybody's hearing those same follow-up questions that may be originating from the original question. So the dynamic would keep changing as the person moves on to two people. A different question may be asked as a follow-up. So I think this way, everybody is privy to the same exact information. Does anybody else have anything to say on that? Do we wanna stick with this process as Jill described? Okay. And I will do the planning board report, and then we'll be able to move on to the department heads, and we just might get it all in. So the planning board last met on September sixteenth because of the holiday for Columbus Day. The next week, time we meet is October twenty-eighth. There was the resolution that did come forward from the planning board concerning that non-conforming lots and structures, which Ray Poudriere just explained. So a resolution, you will see, came forth from the planning board on that in support of those changes. The three subcommittees that I had advised everybody on have met since we last had planning board. The valet subcommittee met, the outdoor dining subcommittee met, and the courts subcommittee met. Continue to, in those subcommittees, working through any issues there are and ideas that they have. So what's happening is the subcommittees are meeting, and they're working through ideas and suggestions, and then bringing them back to the full planning board. So at this point, no decisions have come out of the subcommittees, or from the planning board as a result of the subcommittee discussions, and they are ongoing for those three subcommittees. We do continue to have people from the courts attending the planning board meetings, speaking both for and against zoning changes there. The other business that has started to be discussed that is, that is interesting, and I anticipate will continue to spur a lot of discussion and debate, is the issue of living fences. So on the planning board level, we are discussing living fences, and is that something that should come forward to council for consideration for an ordinance that would outline what is a living fence, setbacks, height, so on and so forth, if it is something that comes as a result of the discussions in planning board. It really is in the infancy stage right now, and it is something we are simply discussing. And that also came as a result of Ray Poudriere asking the planning board to just start that discussion. We also talked about Ninety-sixth Street and Third Avenue, that crosswalk and that traffic standard. Planning board was updated on the back-and-forth discussion that we've been having with the county. We talked about the possible options of adding an audible, don't walk, doing the old all-walk, which we keep hearing, things about the all-walk. And also, we discussed the option of, or I shared with them these options that the county is considering, the option of having that, a red arrow for the left turn. If you look now, there is no red arrow. It's either green arrow or no arrow. So you can have a green light, and, and you think you can make your left turn, but meanwhile, this crosswalk, you can walk. So if we could have a red left turn there on that arrow, that could make a difference. So those are some of the things that are being discussed with the county, and the planning board was updated on that. And that is a synopsis of planning board. And just a reminder, the minutes are posted online. So moving on, well, questions? Clarifications on anything from planning board? Okay, we can, Jill, we can move on then with our department heads. Engineer?
Okay, thank you. On September twenty-sixth, we had pre-construction meetings for two capital improvement projects. They are Second Avenue Bike Lane Striping and the Ninety-fourth and One Hundred and Fourteenth Street Bulkhead Replacement. The Second Avenue Bike Lane Striping Project will start next week, and the Bulkhead Project will start in November once the contractor receives materials. The two thousand nineteen Utility and Road Program is scheduled to be finalized for public bidding in two weeks, and we will be requesting a motion to bid at the next council meeting. We'll strike a bid schedule in coordination with the clerk's office for your consideration. In regard to the new lifeguard building, we have a progress meeting this week, October third, to review and refine the plans and estimates. The repaving of Paradise Drive and the Bird Sanctuary Sidewalk Replacement is scheduled to begin mid-October and should be done within a couple of weeks from start of construction. And lastly, we are still working on the Ninety-fourth Street and One Hundred and Fourteenth Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Improvement Projects, with heavy emphasis on Ninety-fourth Street, because that is your linchpin to install your storm sewer pump station on Ninety-third Street. So that is a very high priority for our office to move that. We may be able to shave off six months possibly, so we're, we're jumping on it.
Any questions for Mark?
Tax collector?
Good afternoon.
Hi Debbie.
Hello. So my favorite season is over. Sad to see it go. But with that comes, the foot traffic and the phone calls have greatly slowed down, and we're returning to a sense of normalcy in the tax office. My tax sale was held September eighteenth, and we sold two liens. We are collecting the summer reeds as we speak. Anybody who wants to apply for the senior frees or the homestead rebate, the deadline to apply for the senior frees is October thirty-first, and the deadline for the homestead is December second. And forgive the brevity of my report, but that's all I have for today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon. Business as usual in the tax assessor's office. Deeds, address changes, that kind of thing. I had seventeen usable deeds this month from September first to September thirtieth. They've kinda died down since the summer's over. This year's added assessment total was fifty-seven million, two-hundred-forty-thousand, two-hundred dollars, which is, I think, the most we've ever had. So, but we had the Big Reed Salt Spa Project and the Yacht Club, and so last year the total was fifty-two million, one-hundred-forty-three-thousand, six-hundred. And in twenty-seventeen, it was thirty-six million, eight-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand, nine-hundred. So we can, I guess, chalk it up to the economy. I do have a new job that the, the construction office gave me. With the changes to the demolition rules and regulations, the construction office has required notification by certified mail to all adjacent property owners, so that everybody's gonna know that the house is coming down, that, so it's just, you know, more work for me. Ten dollars each list, just keeps adding up, you know? But anyway, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, thanks so much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Margaret.
Construction.
Good evening. As we expected, the revenues went up this past month because of the demolition ordinance and new construction. So there was a substantial difference from last month to this month. We had eleven demolition permits issued in September, and seven new home permits, which basically doubled than what it was the month before, or a little bit more. But we'll see this probably this coming month one more time, and it'll slow down again for a little bit until they start up in the, in the spring.
Anybody got anything for construction? Okay.
Great, thank you.
CFO.
The state just issued its best practices inventory a week or so ago, so you'll have something before the, the next council meeting to go over that. The best practices inventory per the state is an inventory that assesses each municipality's compliance with various laws and evaluates implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. There are eighty-four questions this year, thirty are new for twenty-nineteen, and they relate to some of the topics are cybersecurity, budget, shared services, financial administration, capital projects, environment, and procurement. And have it for next, next council meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Jim? Borough Clerk?
In the Borough Clerk's office for the month, there were one hundred and thirty beach vehicle permits issued for six thousand, five hundred dollars, seventeen certified copies, a hundred and seventy dollars, one Oprah request for twenty-five dollars, and six marriage licenses for a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Total for the month was six thousand, eight hundred, sixty-three dollars.
Thank you. Public Works, is Grant here? Can you do it in two minutes? Can you do it in two hours?
He'll give the clip notes.
Yes, we did, Grant.
Parking meters and kiosk machines have been shut down today, so it's a free parking throughout town. New beach regulation signs are in, and we're gonna, getting ready to install them over the next three weeks. New kayak racks are here, and we'll increase our number of kayaks to a hundred and eighty from the ninety-something that we have right now. They'll be installed after all the kayaks and, and boats are removed from Marina. The buildings and grounds crew are working on fall decorations, cleaning up mulch beds. Hang baskets were taken down for the season. We are gonna keep the urns going as long as the flowers hold out. Solid waste, we have bulk trash collection starting Tuesday, October fifteenth. We requested, residents do not put. We requested residents do not put brush or hazardous materials out with their bulk. Let's see. New trash can lids were put out on all of our public cans. If you had noticed, they're black right now with embossed lettering in white. The reason we did that was the older lids were getting pretty tattered, and it was co-mingling trash and recycling. So we're still working, and we have a few cans that are oddball sizes that we have to get new lids for those, but that should be completed by next season. And that's basically my report.
Wow, that's good. Good job.
Good work, Grant.
Other than, um, with the utilities department, that's about pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Anything for Grant? Anything for any of the items we discussed? Okay, what we're gonna do is adjourn and take about a two, three-minute comfort break, and we will come back for the council meeting. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.